I'll make a motion to pass the minutes on of two twenty, twenty nineteen, regular session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Now, if there's a motion and a second to accept the council meeting of February twenty, thousand nineteen. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right beside. Citizens input. Pam?
Yeah.
No. They're just here. About Carol.
Well, the other thing, I've got blood drive coming up the twenty first. If anybody's interested in coming to the church, one thirty to five thirty, we need blood.
Real short, which church?
Oh, United Methodist Church, one thirty to five thirty.
Okay. They probably don't want money.
They just took six miles out.
This is more out.
No, citizens input? Just what? All business, we'll go on to attorney's report.
Alrighty, guys, feelings here, um, there's a couple things on the agenda, we'll hit those in a minute. First, I'm gonna tell you about the, it's a mortgage foreclosure case that was filed by Deutsche Bank National Trust Company against Terrence and Kelly Shai. The town was named as defendant in this mortgage foreclosure only because of the fact that we have one of these loans, this CBVG revolving loan fund program, we've loaned some of these in the past. And to give you a little background, it looks like back in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, the amount of ten thousand dollars was loaned to Terrence and Kelly Shai, presumably for some, I'll call it remodel, I don't really know exactly what the money was utilized for, something to do with real estate. We took, uh, that loan and had that loan agreement recorded, which is not really a mortgage, but it is in essence a lien against that property. There's also, it's called a subordination agreement, which says that our loan would be second in line behind a mortgage that was in the original amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred dollars as of, uh, it looks like July of two thousand and six. Now, the mortgage company has filed this complaint to foreclose and again listed the town because of the fact that we have that, that lien, that, that mortgage interest. The outstanding balance of the mortgage pursuant to this complaint is fifty-nine thousand, some change, there's attorney fees, there's accrued interest. In other words, you're looking at something well over the amount of sixty thousand dollars that is owed just to the mortgage company. Now, the option that we have regarding strictly the mortgage foreclosure case is that we can appear and we can assert our interest in that lien, but I think it's pretty clear that we're gonna be at least second in line behind the primary mortgage company.
Is this the property on Walnut? Wrong way?
Cross the railroad track.
Cross the railroad.
Or the old house where she used to be?
Where they live?
Where they live?
I thought they lived right down here.
East.
Randy, it's, it's three twenty East Walnut Street in Harvest. Is the address of the property that is the subject of the foreclosure.
I know that one.
Okay, that one, wrong person.
Yeah.
Again, this is a situation that, you know, when they go through these mortgage foreclosures, at some point, the, the bank may well get a judgment against the Shais and against all the other defendants, which just basically says our mortgage is superior, trumps any of their liens, that they owe that amount, and then eventually can go to what's called a sheriff's sale, okay? If it does, the town obviously has the option to make a bid or purchase the property to in essence protect your lien, okay? What that means you would have to do is bid not only the balance of the lien, but you'd also probably have to bid the balance of the lien plus the mortgage, the interest, the attorney fees, et cetera, which you're looking at a substantial sum of money. And you may wind up being the owner of that real estate at a sheriff's sale. Now, it's up to you guys what you decide to do, but if we sit back and do nothing, we're not really prejudiced, we could still show up at a sheriff's sale and do that, but if we, if, if I file an answer to the complaint, and again, I, I don't think in good faith we could say that we stand in front of the mortgage company given the, the documentation that I'm looking at here. And so I don't really know of much practical use that, that effort would provide. If there was any interest on the part of the town, it would probably be at a sheriff's sale, you'd be looking at a pretty good sum of money, uh, to have to bid and wind up trying to protect your lien, if you will. I'll note that the original loan agreement talks about the fact that it is a default, which means that the amount secured by the loan, the ten thousand dollars, shall be due and payable in full upon demand if or upon the commencement of foreclosure proceedings by any other mortgagee. So in other words, technically, we could say, okay, right now, it's, it's due and payable. Chances of collecting on that, my presumption would be very slim to none. If there was any chance, I don't think there would be a mortgage foreclosure in the first place. So I'm telling you those things. I don't know that there's a lot of sense in, in having us appear or defend anything to do with mortgage foreclosure. If there's any interest in anything to do with the property, I think it most likely would be at a sheriff's sale, which would be quite some time down the road, it may not even come to that. The Shais could well, obviously, get something arranged or worked out with the mortgage holder. Who knows? But I'm letting you know that, uh, that's what's going on, and if you want us to do anything, I can't.
Mark, would ACDC have any interest in that property?
I would rise.
That's what I'm thinking too at that point.
You're probably too high.
Is there any limitation on that, any date?
How do you mean?
So we let it go for a year, so I mean, is there any time?
Well, um, it, I don't, it is tough to say exactly how long the whole process will take. Some of these are, are quicker, and I'll say a quick one is probably a five to six month process.
Okay.
Uh, some of them linger on for well over a year.
Short of the, short of the sheriff's sale thing, and then it'd be way overpriced, we're basically out. What are you telling us?
I don't know the value of the, of the real estate. If the real estate was worth two hundred thousand dollars, I'd say, eh, maybe that's something to consider, but I don't know what the value is. Obviously.
It's not a grant, though, it was a loan.
It's all, it's all loan, we just put down, you know, say for the last three years.
It's nothing that needs to be forgiven, we don't have to do anything like that this evening regarding this particular piece of property. But again, the, the real thing that, if we wanted to do anything would be to appear in that mortgage foreclosure case. But again, to protect our interest, again, I think it's pretty clear that we're second in line, at least second in line. And at the end of the day, you'd probably be looking at paying a fair amount of money at a sheriff's sale to try to recover anything to do with that ten thousand dollars.
We can let it ride till then and make up our decision before the sheriff's, if it comes to that, though.
You can let it ride, it may be a little tricky to actually, if, if we don't appear, I don't know that I'll get a lot more notice.
Oh, okay.
Regarding things like sheriff's sale dates, judgment dates, anything of that nature.
Have to look forward to paper or something.
Correct.
That's why I was wondering, how long can we let it ride? We can let it ride till something actually happens, yeah?
You can probably let it ride, you know, three or four months, and I doubt that anything would happen other than a judgment may well be entered against the Shais and all the other named defendants. Uh, by that point in time, that wouldn't shock me. But in terms of actually having the sheriff's sale that soon, I would not expect it to happen that soon.
Not a whole lot avenues to try to cover the money, what kind of situations are there?
I just wanna buy a piece of real estate.
Way overpriced.
Sounds like we just need to let it ride for a while.
What's it cost them all for you to do what you just said, to go in there and just appear? Your time, for now?
It is my time, which would really not be significant, to be honest. There, there may be hearings set, but I'll be honest, I don't know that I would even appear at the hearings. But maybe a way for us to kinda track progress of the matter.
Well, if you'd send him a letter, then, okay, I see.
I would need to formally.
Yeah, right.
It's basically a way of letting him know, hey, I represent the town of Argus, and I would have to respond to the complaint. But that's what I'm saying, that part of it really wouldn't take terribly much time or really would cost a whole lot of money for the town. But there may be hearings that are scheduled at some point down the road. I, I don't see the sense of having me appear at those hearings, uh, and bill on town for the same.
Maybe if we got two hours in it, for you to show up and at least you were informed what's going on and we can make our decision whether we do it or not.
Basically, we let him.
Yeah.
Respond to it, and then just they, they would have to keep him notified, then essentially the rest.
I like that.
I guess that's my idea. We need a motion for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to let the town attorney file a response to this claim we're discussing, uh, Shai property, and keep the town council, right, of what, uh, progresses, I guess is the best word on it.
Second. There's a motion and a second to go forward with the proceedings on this foreclosure. For any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carrying. All right, next on.
Next, we have a parking ordinance. Hopefully you guys have had a chance to take a look at this. Really, what we're talking about here, what this is doing, is restricting parking to the downtown area, and that area is defined as Michigan Street from Smith Street to William Street, and it's also Walnut Street from Maple to First. And what we're saying in regards to those areas is that there would not be any parking for more than two hours or overnight on those designated parking areas. Now, I'm incorporating that in section seventy-two point oh four of the town code. Kind of the, the neat thing about doing it that way is that if we stick it there, and we would have it as subsection P, and I don't know if anybody's seen over this, but if we do that, then we don't have to do anything with our ordinance violation code because it's already, it's already identified in that traffic code ordinance. Any violation of it strictly says seventy-two point oh four, it's a violation. So it's given the court the authority to enforce that, if you will.
Do I have a motion? Then we can discuss it. We need a motion and a second, a discussion, we need to throw it down, we can pass it up. We gotta get into the right word here.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, dot ordinance, is that number, seventy, amending ordinance seventy-two point oh four with the two hour parking limit on the designated streets.
Just on the first reading?
First reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can discuss it, there's a motion and a second. Now we're open up the discussion. Suzanne's got some scruples, what's your thoughts?
My thoughts are rentals should not be parked on the main street, they should be parked behind the buildings or in the parking lot. I don't think people that live there should park in the main street, that's for businesses, that's my opinion.
Customers of the businesses.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with Suzanne.
What, what can we do to, and, and I agree with you, but what can we do to enforce that these rental, these people that live there, what can we do to enforce that they park there? We, can we post that somewhere, or we have to make an ordinance for that, or?
That's what, what do you have for this? You got your no vehicle shall permitted to park more than two hours or overnight on the following streets. Now you could, instead of saying no vehicle shall be permitted to park more than two hours, between the hours of.
Well, that, yeah.
Okay, so you could add between the, the hours of, say, eight to, I'm just throwing these numbers out, I'll take them to art. Eight to six. Eight, eight in the morning until six, and you can park there two hours.
Okay.
Or, yeah, because after six o'clock, as Suzanne pointed out, you know.
Restaurants and the bars.
You get the restaurants and the bars, and that, so they could park, but no parking from, say, and again, I'm throwing these numbers out, three AM to, that's six, or eight AM.
We need overnight.
Or six AM, yeah.
Yeah.
So that gives the guys, kind of, street sweep or snow cleanup or whatever. And also that eliminates, that allows that person to come home, park, um, the, um, the groceries, do what they gotta do, make a move to either the parking lots.
So we would have to put signage up there then, along the streets, both, all four ways, I guess, might say.
I'll be honest, the, that little phrase in there where it says no overnight, or nor overnight, is really kind of repetitive, it's really, I consider unnecessary, given that if you can't park there for two hours, you certainly can't park there overnight.
Right.
But is it, is it the intent of the council that you don't want somebody to pull in at nine PM and they can park there until six AM the next morning?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, say, open for business hours, but not, say, past, like I just threw those hours out, three AM to six AM. Or five AM, no parking uptown at all.
At all?
At all.
Oh, okay.
So that they can come in and follow the streets or use the street sweep for, you know, cause I mean, log house opens at five thirty, six, correct?
The bars usually, bars usually close by three or supposed to be.
Is there a rule for?
I don't.
Yeah, I, I think.
I just say.
I know, but streets could be.
Same thing.
Doug's come in, I know, he's come in.
We just, we work eight hours, we come in at five, whatever, we're eight hours.
Yeah, I know Doug, there a couple years ago was coming in earlier and sort the streets and then.
I'll make, I guess, my thoughts from the police department side of things. Working with them, I, I kinda like Georgia's definition a little better than trying to put all these, because if we have certain cars at a certain time, how's the police department ever gonna know who's supposed to be there at what times?
Right.
I, I, you know, try to take some of the confusion out of them to enforce it even.
Yeah, you gotta mark tires and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, part time job. I, I kinda like the idea of defining the hour, you know, or definition of the definition of the hours versus the.
Yeah, I think we'll have to.
So I'm hearing no parking for more than two hours, that applies at any point in time, but you don't want any parking between certain hours, and I E., three to six or something like that, three AM to six AM.
Yeah, I think that's what we're talking about.
Think if they still wanted to, though, like you said, if you went uptown for karaoke night and you were there for four hours, now you're, you're subject to a ticket, but.
Well, you're always gonna push your luck.
Yeah.
I mean, there's days in Plymouth, they don't, the meter person doesn't go every day.
Right.
Right.
You, you never know.
You go at your own risk, yeah. You could stay up there for four hours, but can't carry a good ticket.
Plus you got the parking lot across the street.
Because that'd be two hours, it could be a full, can you make a four hour parking lot? I mean, we're still fighting, we're still fighting to.
I guess the problem has been the apartment people, and you've even got some of the business owners that park right there in front, when there's a parking lot across the street and.
Well, you know, people are parking on the speedways, the parking lot, which I don't, but can that get us into any trouble?
Not us, that's what I'm telling them.
Just the people, we're not allowing it then.
We're not telling them they can't.
We're not telling them they can't. Now, the, the property behind that, that we turned over to the park. So, who's responsible for that, the park or us? I mean, if, would the park board say, we don't want anybody parking on that property then?
That's not parkable.
Yeah.
It's the grass, yeah.
Yeah.
Parking's on the rest there.
Yeah, as I said, there's no, well, I know it's not.
I don't know, I, I mean, I, I could live with the two hours and then no parking from three to six. Yeah, that's three to six.
I think it needs to be three.
Somebody goes to log house at five thirty, I don't think you're gonna see a cop up there looking at his wife trying to.
Is that what it?
Suzanne, how you feel about that?
I would be good with that. But I would like to also, maybe we can't exist, but encourage parking behind the buildings and the aisles as much as possible.
Sort of wait for tenants that enter the building through the back?
Not all of them.
So you're gonna force them to park in the back of the entrance in front, you gotta walk around inside walk? Or you get into the residence parking?
That's, I mean, that's. And then, and do we have to, to comply with the ADA?
Well, every house is supposed to have two off-street parking places, why not the rentals?
I don't know. What's, what's, what's ever been in our ordinances?
I'm complying with ADA, your parking lot's ADA accessible. You don't have to provide parking for apartments, that's not your job.
Right, so our parking lot there across the log house. And, and I know their parking here is your library thing too, but what are you gonna do there?
There's been people parking here between the bank and the.
Yeah.
Post office too, I've been noticing the last couple of mornings, I've been just kinda paying attention to where people are parking. I go to work, and I mean, that's, there's a lot of cars downtown, early in the morning. But there's been people parking, but a lot of construction, training and things back here, but, uh, but, uh, but yes, there's way too many cars downtown for the guys to have to try to work around, it's a mess, so.
Especially when there's some snow, because they really try to do a good job with that heavy snow.
So drop the overnight, put two AM to six AM? Three AM. I'd, I'd. Two hours. Hold from the hours of three AM to six AM.
Over here too.
From three to six, yeah.
Yeah.
What time's it tell?
I think the chambers by state law have to be closed by, it said two thirty.
There's some certain trades I like too. It's not every trade's at two, but a lot of places stay open until three or four, I think.
I'd say three to six.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think three o'clock is.
I think there's.
So.
Take a parking hardware.
You can, you can still pass this on the first read, even if you have to change and come back if you choose.
So all in favor of passing this on the first read? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carrying, so yeah, come back with that change.
We'll do it. Uh, the next thing is, it's a resolution dealing with EMS and run reports that they're required to turn in. And it's basically, it comes out of, it's, you've got Indiana code, then you've got what's called Indiana administrative code. And this, uh, this requirement is out of Indiana administrative code, but it says that all run reports, completed run reports shall be turned into what's called a receiving facility no more than twenty-four hours after a patient is delivered. And so to give you an example, Argus EMS responds to a call, some guy has a heart attack, and they transport him to St. Joe Regional Med Center in Plymouth. From the point in time when they deliver him to St. Joe, they've got twenty-four hours, the person, or the EMS volunteer, if you will, that performed the services has twenty-four hours to get what's called this run report delivered to St. Joe. So whether it's St. Joe, whether it's, uh, Woodlong, or maybe even just to transfer it in another ambulance, but they have that period of time. And I guess my understanding is that's not really been followed, and we've had well over twenty-four hours in delay of not getting those things turned in. So this resolution addresses that, and it says that they need to have that turned in within that twenty-four hour time period. If they don't have that done for any reason whatsoever, then they're gonna forfeit their shift pay for that shift during which the run report was, was due or should have been turned in. I talked with Sarah a little bit about this. And she indicates that it's, it's not a, it's a situation where it's actual EMS personnel on duty has the responsibility, and it's to turn it into the receiving facility, it's not to turn it into her. And it's not, not her job or her responsibility, so there's, there's, there's no, no need for other, anything other than just, you gotta get it to the hospital or where we're giving up the patient off.
I think we need to make a motion to pass, I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution number twenty nineteen dash two.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to pass resolution twenty nineteen dash two. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carrying. All right. Derek, anything else?
Nothing else on the attorney report, but I'm not done talking about it.
Well, why don't you just keep going?
What?
We'll go into this paving bids, and then we'll, and then he can go ahead and keep talking, and we'll do your report.
We're gonna start with colonial states.
Okay.
We can start with that.
Can, that's fine.
Um, my recommendation is that we don't go with the lowest bid on that one. I've made a few phone calls, uh, there've been several red flags. Unfortunately, nobody really wants to put the name out there that they've stayed behind that, but there's, there've been several, uh, people I've talked to that recommend that we don't go with them either, so. That's my recommendation.
I guess E and D want to.
We're not, we're not talking about West Uportwood Trail, we're, we're talking about colonial states.
I know, but why was E and D, why did they put a bid in on that?
That, that's a whole nother story.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I, you know, cause they, the others are, are really low on that one, and.
Yeah.
I think that bottom, I think the colonial states is probably a little more than they want. They've got more time.
They'll be outfit, that's basically what it went down to, so they would have to get with somebody else and.
Now, this road construction in colonial states, I don't make, I think I understand, but we're talking about not just paving that part, but also putting a sidewalk on the inside part of it?
Yeah.
And.
There'll be curbs all the way around the sidewalk, there'll be drainage in there.
So that, that price of, from John Moore to five hundred and eighteen includes doing all of that?
Yeah.
That's putting the sewer pipe in under the street and everything for the drainage taking to our mains now?
They won't want our mains, they're big, I think everything goes to the pond in the middle.
Everything goes to the pond in the middle?
Yeah.
With storm drains.
Yeah, storm drains.
Storm drains.
So you recommend E and D or?
Uh, Washington Kelly.
Washington Kelly versus John Moore?
Yeah.
Washington Kelly's been around a long time, they, they do a lot of work for the state, so.
Uh, Washington Kelly's been around a long time. They, they do a lot of work for the state, so.
Guys, this is, this is where I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit here, okay?
Okay.
Um, basically, this is a situation where I think we really have to pay attention to statutes, and we really have to be specific as to what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing. And I'm, I'm gonna talk for a little bit here, but I'm gonna first talk to you about Indiana Code thirty-six, one twelve, four. And that is a section in the, in the public, uh, public works statute, if you will, for bidding a project like this, and it's what we've been following all along. Uh, working with Adam Marsh, and they've done a really good job of adhering to this chapter of Indiana Code, if you will. But when it comes time to consider a bid or bids that have been submitted, there's a statute here that indicates that the board, and the board means Argus Town Council in this instance, but that the board shall award the contract for a public work or improvements to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. Okay? Now, what that, what the significance of that is, that you'll note that it says shall, which means it's what you gotta do. It's not just if you want to, but it means no, you will. Um, but it also provides kinda the, I guess, the catch-all, if you will, of, of calling them the responsible and responsive bidders. That same statute also goes on to talk about if the board awards a contract to a bidder other than the lowest bidder, that the board must state in the minutes the time, at the time that the award is made, the factors that were used to determine which bidder is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder that justify the award. We need to keep copies of the minutes, which we already do anyway. Um, but we have to be specific as to why we're taking these steps or doing this in terms of not awarding this bid to the lowest bidder.
Right.
Okay? This actually then goes on to define what it means to be a responsive bidder, and it says the court, or I'm sorry, that the board can consider the following factors. Whether the bidder has submitted a bidder quote that conforms in all material respects to the specifications. Whether the bidder has submitted a bid that complies specifically with the invitation of bid and the instruction of bidders. And whether the bidder has complied with all applicable statutes, ordinances, resolutions, or other rules pertaining to the award of the public contract. Statute, same statute also goes on to talk about, and determining whether a bidder is a responsible bidder, the board may consider the following factors. The ability and capacity of the bidder to perform the work. The integrity, character, and reputation of the bidder, and also the competence and experience of the bid. Okay? So guys, these are the, those are the factors that you need to think about and that you need to consider in, in making a determination about whether to follow Jamie's recommendation and say, we're not gonna go with the lowest bidder, which was John Ward Concrete and Excavating, but we're gonna go with the next lowest bidder, which was Washington Kelly. And Jamie has compiled a list, and Jamie's worked with me, or I've worked with him, and basically, uh, looking at those factors and basically the information that he's gathered, the things that he's learned in his investigation uh, concerning John Ward Concrete and Excavating, and I wanna, I wanna put this on the record, I wanna make sure that this is important, and it'll go in the minutes, and I can help you with it, I don't expect you to write them all down as I'm reading them, but these are the factors that, that we've come up with as to why we believe that John Ward Concrete is not the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And I'm gonna start with responsive. And an issue there is that John Ward is not a pre-qualified contractor listed by INDOT and also is required by Indiana Code eight twenty-three ten at SEC, and also Indiana Code four thirteen point six dash four. Those are two different sections of Indiana Code, both of which seem to indicate that he needed to be what's called a qualified contractor to submit a bid or to be awarded the bid. I shouldn't say that, it's a better way to say it. Um, there's a list, uh, that's published by INDOT, and I checked the list just today to update and make sure that, that they were not on there, and that was the initial concern, was that they did not appear on this list of pre-qualified contractors. The date of the INDOT listing is February fourteen, two thousand nineteen. And when you go through the list, you won't find John Ward Concrete and Excavating listed, in other words, they're not a pre-qualified contractor. That's a, in my opinion, that appears to be a major problem in terms of two statutes seem to indicate that he needs to be a pre-qualified bidder to bid on this project. And I think especially considering that we've got the community trust and grain involved, and that comes, does play into this as, as well. Um, but I, again, updated this today, I took a look at this list again. He's still not listed. The date of the listing from INDOT has not changed. I don't know how frequently they do update it. But as of, again, immediately prior to this meeting, he's not listed as a pre-qualified contractor. So that's obviously a big problem. I think that falls under that responsive category. In terms of responsible, um, the, basically, the listing or the issues that I think that the town has with, with John Ward is concerning the reputation of not paying vendors, a reputation of unsafe work practices, a reputation of poor quality work, a reputation of failure to comply with state law concerning equipment, concern of the ability of Ward to perform the work given the distance from his principal place of business, especially involving the transporting of concrete, a concern of lack of experience within this locale, and also concern of poor reviews from other customers and clients. So those are all the factors that basically Jamie has become aware of, uh, that have been made known, and those are the factors that we would, we would list and identify as reasons for not selecting John Ward as the lowest bidder if that's what the council still chooses.
That's a state law.
Well, the, the factors are basically, the, the, those are issues or items that were discovered basically as a result of
Sure.
Jamie doing a lot of life work, doing a lot of investigation. Um, also me taking a look at, you know, INDOT listings and the research in Indiana Code, uh, to see what we had here.
I know you found Washington Kelly on Indiana Code. So we have to state in turn minutes then why we're, but by the investigation of our utility superintendent and our town attorney, that, uh, that John Ward did not meet the requirements that's needed to be a bidder on this project?
Specifically, that he was not the lowest responsive and responsible bidder because of the factors previously identified.
You make the motion to accept it, and the rest of it'll fall into place if that's what you wanna do.
Well, I not sure how to word it all, but I'd like to make a motion that we do take the bid from Washington Kelly uh, for this project, and based on the reason being that John Ward uh, did not meet all the requirements that were specified within the state requirements, whatever it is, and, you know.
Additional factors?
Additional factors.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion to accept Washington Kelly for the Colonial Estates road construction, along with all the circumstances and things he has wrote down, and he just recited there.
And before there's a vote on this by the council, I just, I wanna make sure that you're clear, that you understand that this can be a, an invitation for issues, problems, uh, that the town, we, we could have to clearly answer for why we've done what we've done, if this is a vote to approve that motion um, and to go with, uh, someone other than John Ward.
It's pretty like it's in black and white, so.
Well, I, I certainly think that there are some clear factors here that, um, would weigh in our favor. But again, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't be involved in litigation, that we won't have to deal with that. Uh, or just simply answer to why we weren't, uh, awarding this bid to the lowest bidder. Just so that we're clear.
Any other discussions?
Just think that's silly.
I'll, I'll favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So the motion carried unanimously. Next one?
The next one, I recommend that we go with, um, E and B paving for West U Court and Woodland Trail, and they were the lowest bidder.
And they're the ones who've done the sidewalk and everything, right? And the park? Yes or no?
I, I don't know.
E and B, they've done all of their paving here.
They do a lot of. They, they paved Maple Street and all the paving is good done around.
They, they've done, yeah, they've done most of it.
They're, they're local too, they're on Rochester, aren't they?
Arlington's the main office.
Arlington.
Main office, but yeah.
I think they've got a plan in Plymouth too, where that's all.
That's all.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the bid for E and B paving for the road improvements for Woodland Trail and West U Court.
Second.
Motion second to accept the E and B paving for improvements of Woodland Trail and West U Court. Any other discussion? None? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Guys, we gotta, we, this is a long, we got a couple of documents concerning that bid with regards to E and B and Colonial Court. There's an agreement, which is basically against the contract. And there's also a document called Notice of Award, that if you're inclined to, you've already accepted that bid, uh, we can go ahead and have you take a look at those and get those executed. We don't have the same documentation, that Notice of Award and the contract for Washington Kelly, because we simply didn't know exactly what the council may do, or didn't have a good feel for that. So that's not been yet prepared. My understanding is it'll be prepared very soon. Um, tomorrow, so that the council can go ahead and get that Notice of Award and that contract executed as well, but we've at least got the E and B one ready to go.
George Young asked, I'm just accepting attorney report?
I move to accept the attorney reports.
There's a motion, a second, to accept the attorney's report? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Small business incentive and building incentives.
Where is the man?
Yeah, it's you.
I'm falling asleep over here.
Hopefully you've all read those.
Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory. If you remember a while back, it's been quite a while now, we did two different incentive things downtown, trying to spruce up the downtown. Uh, those, we just kinda threw money out there and let those people, uh, this is a little different. Uh, we're trying to design some type of program looking forward. Most of you know why this came about, but, and it's not just for that instance. I guess I'm trying to come up with something for year after year. Uh, I think we, I don't know how much we budgeted, we've got a community development fund that has money in there, and that could be something you leave in there just for this purchase, or purpose each year. Uh, I guess the main thing, if you've read this, we need to know if the dollar amounts are where you think they should be, if the scope of the projects are where you think they should be, what they can do, what they can't do, that type of thing. Uh, in going through this, uh, this is just, this would be what they would get, this explains the program. Uh, from there, there's a separate, separate application that I've got that I'm working on. Uh, my thinking on how this would work, if this goes through, and you want to do this, that application comes in, and I think Jamie, myself, and probably the council president will review, review those. If they get an acceptable mark, then you, they'll come in front of you. Uh, if you get one that you do and it doesn't matter the amount, whatever it is, from there is where Derek will probably have a generic contract written up. Or, because some of these you can see have a, have a time period that they have to stay here, they can't apply for another one, they can't, there's some stuff that they have to get done. Do you have this?
I have.
Okay, I say I've got some questions to give you. Pretty cut and dry. If you have any questions or anything to explain further?
This would be new and existing businesses both?
I don't know. That's a good question.
As it says, to promote the development and expansion, so.
So it could, yes, because the application I wrote, I did put if there were added jobs and that, so it could be, yes. This kinda, with the building side of it, I think helps, before you just kinda threw it out there and anybody could come get it. This kinda gets them on the hook if they're trying to attract or upgrade to, to get somebody in there.
I'm looking at the business one, and I would like to see a biography or resume of the, of the person. And I would like to see a detailed business plan submitted. To me, those are the necessities.
Who are, who are these, uh, programs being funneled through, the, like, the, the third party? So it's, because this is coming straight from us to?
This would be from the town, yeah.
Yeah, gotcha.
This more or less would be a, a grant program, almost like we did the other, and I think we, the town actually did that, but this would, this will all be council-based, you guys will make all the final decisions, yay, nay.
Will there be matching?
The, uh, the other one.
I know the one was up to fifty percent. The business one, I would assume most of those, I don't, I mean, I, obviously, if you get a plan and you can tell that it's up to where they want ten thousand and you can be very picky on that one, I guess I should say, you may not like that word, but you can. It's a case by case. Most of the ones that I, that I robbed us from, they were very strict in their wordage. It was case by case, and you're gonna have to show it to get it. Which, I, I guess running, trying to do that so that people went through these applications before the five of you had to sit down and review them, I hopefully that'll weed out some of the and like I said, I, we may get one a year, and then we may not see another one for five years, I don't know. But at least it's there to help anything that happens further. And the reason this came about, as you obviously all know, I was questioned by a business owner who's trying to move, he has an issue, and he had a good point. I'll sit at a table and try to give a manufacturer millions upon millions of dollars, but we don't do anything for the small people, so. This was the best I could come up with without giving more than that.
Where would be the fullest of the budget?
There's a key or a dollar.
And this would be, that would be your maximum, how I kinda wrote that was the maximum in a year. So if you did both of these plans to the max, it would be twenty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen for the one and ten for the other. And that would take that year's funding, funding.
The business program, you've kinda got capped as, uh, the money the town has allocated for that year.
Probably. I dropped that from, I can say where I stole that.
But I'm just, is there a, is there a cap, if you will, or should there be that same kind of a language?
There could be. It doesn't say that in that.
Right.
Like the fifteen thousand, but that's what we were thinking, was fifteen and ten.
But they may think, well, it's up to fifteen thousand for just my building.
Each one, yeah, so they may need to put that in the, the town's awarding fifteen thousand per year, and you could pick one, you could, you could do three different ones at five thousand. So yes, it probably needs to change a little bit. I can make it the same, I, I see.
With the building incentive, I would like to know what the building's gonna be used for. Last time we fixed up buildings, some were used, some weren't.
Oh, yes. Now, this has to.
I don't see that in there.
Well, they're gonna have to.
To make this not occupied by a business within a certain period of time, they have to take it back to the town.
Yes, most of these aren't gonna qualify unless there's something they've got. This application, they're gonna have to get a picture of beforehand work, I mean, they're gonna have to show that they've got somebody that's gonna rent this building, or. It's not just because I'm just gonna use, Lake City Bank comes, hey, we wanna fix up this on our building, well, that doesn't qualify, I mean, it's gotta be something. This is to attract new tenants, I guess would be my thought in, in why you would use this program.
It's got an area of the requirements. If the application is approved, if I am buying the agreement, which will produce, reflects the agreed upon use of the funds and requirements, including payback provisions for a breach.
And this is just our guidelines. In the actual application, we can add anything if you wanna, and we can put in there what.
Right. You want to see a resume?
What's coming in, oh, yeah, what do you have slated, they're gonna have to show something that's coming in, or you're gonna deny the application.
That will fix up a building, the field warehouse.
It says two written estimates by licensed contractors. I would like to see the work performed by licensed contractors. Some people perform, they do their own work, and we don't know how that can go.
No, and that would be written in his, but yes, that would be, that's why that's stated that way from where I, where I stole that from, is because they want a licensed contractor to do the work, yes.
But still, you got the permanent process of, uh, inspection.
Yeah, but at least here they're bonded and, and they're gonna need to be licensed, they have to be bonded and I think that will. to be bonded, and I think that will stop a lot of the issues you have of somebody trying to do it themselves and overcharge and items like that.
I'm going to say that I believe, along with Suzanne, that in the case of a new business wanting to come to town, I, I don't think them providing a business plan is out of reach, I think they ought to provide that, I mean, we need to know before we start committing funds to businesses, what their intent is.
You could do as much as, we could do as much as in that application, you could sit down and interview the person if you wanted to, I mean, we could do almost anything, but that can be listed, a business plan can be listed in here and they have to supply it when they put the application in.
I think I would be very comfortable with that language in there.
And if nothing else, that may be a way to weed some out if they don't turn it in with the application.
Or if they're wanting to come and grow lettuce or something.
Yeah.
And like I said, it'll be a case by case, you guys will have to make those decisions.
Okay, everybody, getting a little noisy. Would you like Michigan?
Oh, listen to, come on, you guys talked about, instead of us being the, it's kind of like, I think, a, like the AC/DC on somebody else, isn't it, so we just kind of follow them in, get that third party in there, is that what you're talking about, or not, I mean, is that what you'd like to see? Something to do just?
Well, no, I was just talking to Stan about it, it's, you know, possibly, you know, instead of using $10,000 grant per business, possibly use a $10,000 investment into a chamber of commerce, try and get that, you're like, see, if, I believe that if at least 1,000 businesses are here and I've seen that somebody else is actually throwing in some funding, I would be more, you know, able to be, you know, to accept 10 million once a month or once every three months with other regular business owners to try and do something with pooled money that you have within that commerce, you know, but I don't know if that, that's going to take a lot more time, I mean.
And you mean, that's probably a separate issue.
Right, and what works in here is, it's a lot, it's a lot bigger process.
All we're doing, I guess in this situation, and it is correct, like I said, when I come back to you and, hey, you know what, this company A needs this and this, this is kind of the same thing, this is just all drawn out ahead of time, so they know what they can get, this is a, and like I said, you may have company A come in here, we want $10,000, but you may look at their stuff and say, you know what, we're going to only offer you 2,000 at this time, and that's what, yeah. And just, hopefully that may be a little incentive, this one that's coming up is kind of a little different, but it's still one that's been here, it's a.
It's an established business, I don't know what it's going to do.
I feel, I feel better with this, and I told Georges before, sitting up there, I don't care how much money we spend downtown, I spend as much as we had to as long as it's done right, and I think this spells it out better than we have.
Yeah.
I mean, before we just kind of threw it out there and.
Yeah, some painted, some didn't.
So, well, this kind of spells out, I mean, you're going to have to show justification before you qualify for this.
Justification and experience, education in which you can find to do, because the retail industry, as we know, is.
Well, yeah, but this will, I mean, that shows before pictures and after, I mean, they're going to have to follow through also.
The service industries, restaurants are service-type industries, that is what's going to end up downtown, in my opinion, because stores, retail, that's pretty much online. I mean, your basic things like your grocery store, those are the only things that, that retail is good for right now.
Well, Derek, you said you've looked over these?
I'm skim, I haven't really studied, to be honest, and I'm glad to learn more about them, I'm sitting here now.
I would talk about doing this for what?
Five, six years now? At least?
At least?
I think it's a good start, I think we should run with this, maybe change the wording or something, or negotiate something else, I don't.
Well, like you said, once we get the application, even if everything is not in this grant and this other one, you can add to the application because it does say it's subject to change, so we can make that application as tough as we want it to be.
This is not really a legal document, this is just kind of their guidelines for filling out the application.
Yeah.
So I've got the one pretty much done, I'll finish it and then get the second one, I'll email it, you guys can see, and that's where we'll add the business plan, and you put that on there, you must supply a business plan.
Right.
Then there'll be a yes or no, and it'll stay out there, if not supplied, your application will be denied, so.
I'm, I'm not so interested in a business plan from an established business like the one we've been talking about, but, I mean, we know what they are, I'm more.
Yeah.
I mean, new coming to town is my comment.
With them, John, it'll be easy, they'll, they can say, yes, our business plan is to continue operating as what we're doing right now, and I mean, that's, that's a very simple one, so, yeah.
So we're looking to move forward with this, we just need a little more. Such as approval of draft.
We'll get the, we'll get the application.
I'll make a motion to accept the, these two rough drafts of the Argus Downtown Building Incentive Program, the Argus Business Incentive Program.
I'll second.
There's a motion, a second to accept these rough drafts to get this going, and a second, any further discussion? What else you going to have for smart to go ahead and get into this?
I'll get the ass done, I'll get with Derek, I assume leaving that up to you, just we'll need some type of contract.
I'd be glad to sit down with you, yeah.
Okay, they all will be pretty much the same, the wording's going to, if you can get one written up on that.
Any other discussion on this then?
As long as you're good, I, I guess the only reason I'm not trying to take over when I did that, but I thought Jamie, Jamie and myself and whoever's the council president at that time can look over those, I thought that saved, because if this gets out there, you know, there may be some, you may get some, so that may solve some headache of some of those, so.
That would cause that reach when it gets here. There's a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, not being. Anybody else have any other old business? Well, real quick here, Harrison Harton has sent a letter of resignation from the Police Commission effective immediately, and Rhonda Davis has put in an application, or application, boy, a letter of interest to take Harrison's place. So, I'm not sure if it's my appointment or everybody's, so let's just, I'd like a motion and a second to.
I'll make the motion to accept.
To take Harrison's place.
Accept Harrison's resignation and appoint Rhonda to the Police Commission.
There's a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Jamie Christmas. We still need two people on the. Yeah, two people from town government on plant commission. So, which means EMS director, fire chief, correct?
We've made that work before.
Town attorney? Town attorney.
We can always use another attorney on the plant commission.
You got one, man.
I know.
All right. New business, anyone have any new business?
I just have one thing.
Okay, Jamie?
The wastewater plant, we're looking at some new test equipment for our co-life test, we're looking at a piece of equipment that can save us time, it's more accurate results, the other thing is going to save us some money over time, we're spending roughly 2,200 dollars a year on, on supplies to do the test, the new piece of equipment would cost us 5,700 to start, but we would, we would save just over $1,000 a year in the supplies, so I'd like to purchase that and get it over longer.
No brainer.
Yeah, it's dollars and cents there.
You know, like I said, we're going to spend 2,200 right now for the, for the material, if we're looking 5,700, we should be good for this year, so, relative to only 3,000 on five, yeah, three years, we're making money, so.
Is there a motion to allow Jamie to go ahead and spend that money?
I said, I said move, allow Jamie to spend that.
There's a second? The only reason he, you know, they got their 2,500 dollar cap unless it's a major catastrophe or whatever, so. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. If nothing else, we'll move on to claims.
Okay, the top, the claim, total claim docket for March the 6th is 298,426 dollars and nine cents. The top five claims are as follows. Number one is INPA at 150,499 dollars and 43 cents, number two is payroll number four at 34,711 dollars and 52 cents, number three is Anthem at 22,701 dollars and 48 cents, number four is Abbott Marsh Consultants at 20,090 dollars, and number five is Republic Services at 12,479 dollars and 39 cents. The top five claims total 240,481 dollars and 82 cents and represent 81% in the total docket.
Motion to accept claims.
I move to accept claims 207 through 271.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I have one question, Jamie, is that payment to Abbott Marsh the last one for that contract, or did you steal all of that money for?
I don't know which one that was for, we've got about three going on right now, so.
There was some for Woodland in there as well as some for Westfield in that 20,000.
No other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Yes, adjourn.
I just wanted to let you know that I did from the last meeting, we decided to put that phrase on the back wall, I did get Matt from Stitches and Things to come in and he did take it with him, I told him that if he could cut it out, we could put it up for him, I have not heard from him since, so I am working on it, but it has not been completed yet, so. The other thing that I had to talk to you guys about was, I think we should have a workshop. I know, we hate workshops. We kind of need to find out where the money for this other officer is coming from, we also need to figure out where the charger money is coming from, we also need to figure out where money is coming from. I found out from Matt at Stitches and Things that the promotional items that we bought last year, the t-shirts and mugs and stuff he has never billed us for, I thought he sent the bill to Red Door direct and then she paid it, that did not happen, so there is even more money coming out of our promotional fund this year, so I think there's, these are just some issues that we might want to sit down and cash out, we don't have to do it tonight, I'm just saying that we need to start thinking about it.
Yeah, the twine is the next meeting. Seven o'clock?
Yeah, we'll just cancel the cemetery.
During the winter, there's not a lot going on.
Oh. Do you want to wait, I mean, we don't have to figure this out at this meeting or next, we can move it into April when you're ready.
You'll be back in April?
Depends on when it is.
April will be just like, you know, April will be touching for me, but.
Just before me.
It's just like a half hour.
I won't, I won't be here April 3rd.
But you want to do it like the second meeting in April?
Which is 17.
Chances me making that one be zero.
Zero?
Just go for it.
Screw them.
Just pick a date. I'll make every date.
Well, no, I get it, you guys tell me when you want to meet, because I, I, we could do this in June, but I, you know, we'll just be kicking it down the road, so whenever you want to pick it up, it's just something to think about.
Will everybody be here May the 1st? As of right now? May the 1st and do it right after the meeting?
I can't commit to that, George, you know that.
Yeah. But that'd give, I mean, that'd give you time when you can look over, we can look over funds and stuff. May 1st and do it right after the meeting, that way nobody else has to come in early.
I have better chance trying to make it after the meeting.
But it's fine. Okay. There's a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.